Okay, Jackie, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, and can you see us?
Recording in progress.
Can you see us from an unusual angle? So, and so are we live on ECAT streaming? Okay, all right, great. All right, well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Easton School Committee Meeting of Thursday, March 27, 2025. Let's see, this meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format where attendance by committee members may be remote or in person, and remote attendance shall count per quorum. This meeting is being broadcast live and recorded on ECAT. For tonight's meeting, we have committee member Jackie Wiseman and Marvel Nemmer participating remotely. Marvel, can you hear us?
Yeah, sorry, can you hear me?
Okay, yes, we can hear you, thank you. Okay, and then in the Simmons Lecture Hall, we have Assistant Superintendent Chrissy Pruitt, Nancy DeLuca, Lauren Loomis, and Jennifer Starr. Okay, this meeting is open to the public. Members of the public attending in person who wish to make comments will be invited to do so during the public comment period of tonight's meeting and will be required to state their name and address before beginning their comments. All right, so with that, our meeting is called to order, and we will move to the first item on the agenda, which is the update from our student representative, Marvel.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, just one second. Okay. So with regard to the EPS students, things have been looking pretty great. A lot more students are engaging with the campus as the weather starts to brighten up, which is also amazing. From OA and EPS's spring sports seasons off to a quick start, or even just students like biking or strolling around. I was even just recently talking to a student from RO who I actually met on the pickleball courts, and he was telling me about how much he loved the spring because he got to come over to the high school courts and play with his friends, which is also amazing to hear. Because I know there's been also a lot of extensive efforts in like the strategic plan or just in general, you know, to merge the campus and, you know, take advantage of all the benefits with having such a large campus all in one space. And then with regards to the EPS, I'm sorry. With regards to the EMS survey, prefaced in a couple of meetings, the result seems generally pretty positive, with more than 80% of students saying that they feel safe and nearly 60% saying that they feel as though they belong. While it may seem that, you know, many students feel opposingly, the data suggests that students across grades 6 through 8 are generally inclined to feel safe and encouraged by the teachers. But nonetheless, the survey definitely begs some more questions that I can hopefully have answered for you all in the coming meetings.
All right, great, thank you. Any questions or comments for Marvel?
I have.
Okay, all right, great, thank you, Marvel.
Thanks, Marvel.
Perfect, thank you.
And I know you have a busy night, so feel free to stay on for as long as you can, but exit whenever you need to.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, great. So before we move to the rest of the agenda, I wanted to take a moment to share some sad news that Hazel Varela, who was a former EPS teacher, has passed away at the age of?
92.
92. And I'd like to thank Ken Flanagan from Richardson Olmstead for passing that information along earlier today, and just wanted to share some information on Hazel that her daughter-in-law had shared today. So she taught for 38 years and was the Chair of the Social Studies Department at OA. She taught from 1959 to 1997 in Easton. And I thought it was interesting that she was the first EPS staff member to use maternity leave. So back then, you were expected to retire or leave teaching when you had children. So she was a trailblazer in that aspect. And then even after her 38 years of public school education, continued to teach for 20-plus additional years at Bridgewater State, Stone Hill, and Curry College, finally retiring, I believe, during the pandemic.
Yeah.
And she also was a member of, and Nancy can fill in anything I'm missing, because I know you know all of this, the Easton Historical Society, the Northeastern Savings Bank, and the Ames Free Library. So.
And I think there's probably others.
Probably an endless, yeah, probably quite an endlessness. So really, a remarkable woman, a staple in Easton. And we send our condolences to her family and her friends and all of her loved ones. Nancy, did you want to add anything?
She was looking forward to both her grandchildren. She has two grandchildren. And Emma was graduating from, is graduating from college this spring, and Jack is graduating from OA. So I know she wanted to wait for that, but Dave called her. So said, let's go.
So would any other committee members or Mrs. Pruitt like to speak?
I just wished, my sympathies are with the family and thank we, Eastern Public Schools is a better place because of her service. And we, I'm sure she'll be greatly missed in the community.
Yes, she was a remarkable woman, and she really left an imprint on the district. And we really appreciate all that she has done for us.
So with that, we'll just take a brief moment of silence before we move to the remainder of the agenda. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up on the agenda, we have personnel change, a retirement of an RO custodian. Mrs. Pruitt?
Sure. Ken Flanagan, who is with us here tonight, custodian at Richardson Olmstead School, has announced his retirement effective the end of the school year after a total of 40 years in the Eastern Public Schools. I have a blurb to share about Ken, however, upon entering this evening, Ken gave me a more detailed timeline that I'd like to share. But I do want to start off by saying that he began his career in Easton as a long-term sub in 1985. And actually, his timeline says the summer of 1983, so I will be correcting that there. But he's worked in multiple schools over his years, where in the past few years, he moved to the Blanche Ames Elementary School when it opened and was a huge help with his contributions in the opening of the building, but eventually moved back to Richardson Olmstead. And if I can share some of Ken's accomplishments and some additional things that he wrote here. In the summer of 1983 until February of 1986, he was the summer help and substitute custodian. During that time, one year cumulative of credible service was earned. February 1986, he was hired as an evening cleaning team custodian at what was then the Easton Junior High School. In March 1987, he transferred to Oliver Ames as a night custodian. In September of 1992, he was assigned to Center School. In the summer of 1997, he moved to the brand-new Richardson Olmstead School, along with everyone else at Center School. November 2022, he was assigned to the brand-new Blanche Ames School as night custodian supervisor. And in September 2023, he returned to Richardson Olmstead as night custodian supervisor. And he wrote a couple additional things here that I think is important to share. Since 1983, there have been 13 different school buildings, including Central Admin. He's worked in 11 of them as substitute, temporary assigned, or permanent employee in addition to filling in as a special ed driver. The Oliver Ames class of 1983, which he is a member of, currently has seven graduates that have returned to work in the district that provided their education. He doesn't think that there's been any other class that has matched, that has matched by another graduating class in Easton. And he's proud to serve alongside his classmates, Jeff Hammond at Blanche Ames, Jim Hamilton at Easton Middle School, Kathy Hayes at Easton Middle School, Bob Larson at Easton Middle School, John Visnowskis at Easton Middle School, and Kathy Wertz at Blanche Ames. And he looks forward to enjoying time with family and friends from around the country. And I know that he has a beautiful letter that will be, also be read.
Yes. So I will go ahead and read Ken's letter, which was so well-written and so touching. We could give awards for retirement letters. This is definitely, definitely an award winner. There's a beautiful song done by two amazing, Dear Dr. Cabral, there's a beautiful song done by two amazing singers, Andrea Bocelli and Sarah Brightman, titled "Time to Say Goodbye." Hearing that song tends to stir many emotions for the listener. I mention that because I am feeling many of those emotions now as I believe that it is time to say goodbye to Eastern Public Schools. After 40 years and four months of service, I will be resigning for the purpose of retirement at the conclusion of the current school year. In one way or another, the Eastern Public Schools have been a part of my life for 53-plus years. Upon graduation from Oliver Ames in 1983, I started working for the district as a summer helper, substitute. After accumulating a year of credible service time, I was appointed to a permanent position in February of 1986. Things did not, didn't always go as planned, and I may not have always agreed or understood everything, but I feel like I'm a better person for being a part of Eastern Public Schools. I was lucky enough and proud to be part of the planning and opening of two brand-new schools in Easton. I appreciate the past and present administrators who trusted me and gave me the opportunity to participate in those building projects, being the school department liaison to the fire chief insert during emergency shelter events, assisting school administration with the district's response during the COVID emergency, along with many other projects over the years. I will not miss things, like getting up at 3:00 AM for snow removal, being awoken from a sound sleep for an alarm call, or working during the summer in a building with no air conditioning. Through the years, I was lucky and blessed to have met and worked with so many wonderful and amazing people. I am deeply and sincerely grateful and appreciative of their kindness, compassion, and friendship. I will miss my Richardson Olmstead family, and I wish nothing but the best for all of them and everyone else who made the Eastern Public Schools successful. If I can be of any assistance during this transition, please let me know. Sincerely and respectfully, Ken Flanagan, Night Custodian Supervisor, Richardson Olmstead School. So committee members?
Sure.
Yes.
I'm after Nancy.
You want to be first? Go ahead.
No, you can go first. Can I tell?
Before they, I just want to say before they start, because you all have wonderful things to say. I do want to pass on words from Dr. Cabral, if that's okay. Dr. Cabral, when she saw that this was on the agenda, was very upset that she was not going to be here in person for you, Ken. She wanted me to express to you how valuable you have been to our team and how much you have meant to this district for all your years of service. She loved working with you on the building committee, and she knew you would chuckle at that. And she is forever grateful for all of your input and everything that you've done to help. She is, like I said, she was very upset that she wasn't going to be here to say this in person to you, but she really just is so thankful and wishes you the best.
Thank you. Okay. Jackie?
Hi, Ken. I had a lot of fun walking through Blanche Ames with you every week. It was always amazing to me that you knew exactly where you were going. You knew your way around that building from day one, even when it wasn't much of a building. And you remembered every little detail about that building. I would forget, and he would say, well, remember, this goes here, and when this was there. He just remembered everything about that building. So I appreciate the time I got to spend with you working on that project. I thank you for all of your work, and I wish you the best in retirement.
And so I'll go. So Ken did graduate in 1983, but I think it was 6th grade at the Lincoln Street School, he was one of my students. So I've known him a long time, and he's always kind. Every time I walk into a building that he's in, we always have a conversation. And you will love retirement. I know you're waiting to hear those words, so. Congratulations.
So I just will quickly say, it's my, when you walked in, I said that this was the most beautiful heartfelt letter that I've ever read. And I feel like that's who you are as a person and what you've given to your work over the years, clearly. You'll be missed, and I wish you the best of luck. I have a feeling I'm still going to read your comments on everything Easton all the time. You're not going far.
And then I'll go last. I'm going to miss seeing you around here. You're like an institution in Eastern Public Schools. And I just, as Jackie mentioned, I, your enthusiasm for everything that was happening with Blanche Ames was contagious, so. And I loved that, you know, agree, disagree, positive, negative. You definitely had opinions about everything going on and felt, you know, it really felt empowered to share them with anybody walking through the school. So I always appreciated your candor and your feedback because it was always offered in the spirit of improvement, right? You were never one to just complain. Like if you had something to say, it was valid and always offered with a sincere look towards making things better for the building, the staff, and the students. So I always appreciated that about you. And I will definitely miss seeing you around campus. So thank you for all of your years of service and for really writing a very lovely heartfelt letter. So did you want to say anything? No? All right. So with that, then, would somebody like to make a motion to accept the retirement of Ken Flanagan with regret?
So move, DeLuca.
And can I get a second?
Second, Wiseman.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes?
Loomis, yes.
All right, congratulations. And thank you for all of your service. Okay, all right. Next up on the agenda, we have a vote to approve new banner sponsors. In your packet, you have a list of banner sponsors. You will see noted in red for the committee's review any new banner sponsors. Most are sport sponsors. All right, great. So we have the Braum Balone. I never know how to pronounce that.
Braum Balone.
Balone? Okay. I always want to Frenchify that. Leon. Come and Play Family Childcare, Easton Health Solutions, Fidelity Investments, George Hainus Jewelers, the Hopkirk Family, LTP Pickleball, Northeast Pruning and Tree, PA Narcissian Landscape and Company, P&amp;L Paintball, Peak Event, S. Smith Contracting, Samuel McCormick and Company, Shovel Town Auto, Shovel Town Basketball Club, Simon Ali's Automotive. And that is the end of the list of new sponsors. So any discussion or questions about any of the sponsors? We appreciate your support. Absolutely, yes. All right, would somebody like to make a motion, then, to accept the addition of these new banner sponsors? So move, Loomis? Okay, can I get a second?
DeLuca, second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, next up is a vote to approve budget transfers. Mrs. Pruitt?
Director Starvjeski is here and will be presenting some budget transfers for the committee's approval. I just want to remind the viewers that when we have appropriations that need to be transferred from one category in our budget to another, that we need school committee approval for that over a certain percentage. So Director Starvjeski will be here. She will be going over that process with some samples, and will be able to articulate exactly what needs to be done.
Thank you, good evening. So within your packets, I've included a couple of different things. This is our first presentation for our budget transfers since our school committee policy was recently adopted, which requires us to bring forward any budget transfers in which our Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Cost Center differs. So for example, transportation is $3,300. If we are moving expenses as far as budget appropriation from a $3,300 line to a $3,300 line, we would not bring that forward to school committee. However, if we're moving in between two different DESI codes, those are the transfers that we are presenting. The item in your packet tonight is three different transfers. We do have more that will be presented in our forthcoming. This is our first one to present, and I do welcome questions or feedback if the format, if you wish the format to be changed in the way that I'm presenting this tonight. So on the screen, this first page on the screen and in your packets, we have included departments to request or provide the reason for their adjustment. So this very first example, this is actually a request from Blanche Ames. And they are implementing a new curriculum within their preschool program, which will require the purchase of additional supplies and materials. And our principal, Mr. Cedarbaum, included a cost estimate of about $5,000 per unit. So the way this is set up, we have the particular line item, which is the textbooks line. There's been identified, not, well, there has been identified that we can transfer $25,000 from that line. And the reason for that is that we were able to reallocate some of our textbooks, our program costs, to our ARPA and ESTER fund, well, ARPA funding, actually, this year. So there has been potentially, not cost savings, but savings within the operating budget because we were able to shift funds to grant funding for this year. So within that, we are requesting to remove $25,000 from that textbooks line to the line below, the instructional supply line. And that is the line where the additional curriculum materials we purchased out of. So the way this is set up, we want to make sure you are presented with what the original adopted budget or appropriated budget is, what the budget adjustment is, and then what the adjusted budget will be once the transfer is posted in our accounting software. So we give you kind of a snapshot of where we're at per original budget column. The far right-hand side, the blue shaded area. And then the budget adjustment, the negative indicates that we're transferring money away from that line, and the positive indicates where we're transferring money to. And then where we'll land in that particular budget expense line once the transfer is posted. So that's the very first adjustment. And then the second adjustment is also from Blanche Ames. And this was a request to replenish our walkie-talkie batteries for that particular school building. And this request is actually moving funds from the textbooks line in Blanche Ames. Once again, we had additional funding in that line because we allocated purchases to a grant this year. And then moving budget dollars from Blanche Ames to our, what we call our 88 account or system-wide, which is where a lot of our equipment purchases come out of, a lot of our building expenses from our Director of Operations budget across our facilities throughout the district. So in this example, our original budget for textbooks is now $119,000 and change because we're taking into consideration the change that was above for the textbooks line. And that's not going to be consistent with every budget transfer we bring to you. It's just because it's the same exact account, and we want to have an accurate accounting of where we would stand if both of these transfers were to be posted. So we're requesting $1,000 out of that textbooks line to then supplement the equipment line for the battery purchase.
Can I just, can I just interject here that I just want to reiterate what, what? Doctor, I'm giving you a promotion with education. What Andrea has been saying about the textbook line. And so it's really important that the community understands that this year, we utilized ARPA funding, which was federal funding from the government for COVID relief, to purchase instructional textbooks, what would fall into a textbook line. But it is, you know, textbooks essentially, workbooks, textbooks, whatever would fall in that line. We were able to utilize grant funding this year, which is why there is the money in those lines currently. Those, that's not a permanent transfer. It's a transfer just for now because those, that money will go back because the materials that need to be purchased next year, that money will be utilized for those materials. So I just want to be really clear about why it looks like there's money in those lines.
Thank you for that, yes. Because ARPA is a one-time funding source.
Yes.
From an operational standpoint, we would still need those dollars in budget for fiscal year '26 to continue our operations. And then the third transfer is from Richardson Olmstead. And this is to make sure we have enough dollars in our copying supply line for copy paper for the remainder of the school year. So in this, this is very similar where the transfer request is coming from the textbooks line. And the request is to transfer $5,000 from that line to the copying supply line to ensure there's enough funds for the rest of the year. So this is our basic format. It's basically a cover sheet. And then within the packet, I have the additional pages. The departments have been provided a template that they're utilizing. They circulate that for signature from a workflow perspective through our DocuSign program outside of our accounting system. And they have to provide backup support out of our accounting software. So the reports they run show a snapshot in time from the general ledger software system so we can double-check the appropriation amount and any pending expenditures that are happening just to confirm the dollar amounts that they're requesting for the transfer. And then so the backup detail, you'll have additional pages just attached of all the detail out of our accounting software system by each expense line. And that's attached to each of the budget transfer requests from the departments. But those are reviewed by our department heads, our building administrators, and our central administration as well. So you'll see the different signatures on there. So they've been reviewed, and they're compiled in one summary document for your review. And I'm going to stop to see if you have any questions just on format or anything in the attachments that I can answer, any questions on?
I have a question.
Yes. Go ahead, Jackie.
For the batteries, for the walkie-talkies, is there a lot of walkie-talkies? Are they specialized batteries? It just seemed like a lot of money for batteries.
I don't know if they're specialized as far as with the brand or the specifications, but we can definitely reach out between Mr. Cedarbaum and Director Copax just to get more information as to why they're $1,000 and maybe get more clarity on the quantity of the batteries that they're ordering.
We typically, for these types of walkie-talkies in the building, they're used by, by certain personnel within the district, within the school. It could be utilized by lunch playground aides. So there is a larger number of walkie-talkies in a school. And remember that the $1,000 is also to anticipate additional funds to be used. So it's the replacement, but also the current replacement, but also replacement for the next few months as well. But there, we do typically have a larger number, especially at the elementary grades when the kids are going out to recess. We have more people that need.
Bus duty.
And bus duty, we have more people that, exactly, the bus duty, we have more people that need walkie-talkies at that time.
Any other questions from committee members?
I really appreciate the format. I thought it was really clear and easy to understand.
I agree. And I, I appreciate the rigor of the request process. Yeah, it's, it's a very clear story and shows that, you know, all the due diligence was done to make sure that these amounts are actually accurate in the system, et cetera, so. It's very helpful.
Okay, any other questions or comments? No? Okay, all right, so with that, I would like to make a motion to approve the three proposed budget transfers as detailed by, by Ms. Starjewski. Can I get a second?
DeLuca, second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wasman, yes.
Star, yes. Loomis, yes. All right, great, thank you. So next up, we have a PACE slash budget update and possible vote to approve the PACE Community Compact. So, so we have Tom Broussard and Nancy Donahue here from the PACE Committee. So I think we can move out to the audience so you have some presentation materials.
If we want, the two of us, we can join you right at the table.
Well, just to, so we can see the presentation.
So we can see the, yeah. Oh yeah, are you just reviewing the compact language itself or was there anything else?
A presentation.
Okay, all right, yeah.
It's not the normal 75 pages.
Okay.
It's gonna take less than, is it gonna take less than 15 minutes?
Uh, I don't know, less.
Come on, let's go, let's go.
We don't want a short change of.
Let's go for 15 minutes, come on.
This is gonna be.
Come on.
Covered by your questions.
You're getting, you're getting bullied by my call team.
I mean, for this.
Oh.
You've been hit.
Mic drop.
We know how this rolls.
They know us.
All right, we will be.
Joe has been with us on five-hour odysseys, PACE committee meetings.
I just brought the one 60 pages, is that okay?
That's, that should be just enough, perfect.
Yes, are we, are we good, Joe?
Oh, I could, I could share my screen.
Six or one, huh?
Yeah, let me do that instead.
For the record, Town Hall is certainly having the same IT issues. Joe was just saying we have some commonality. Just little give and take since, you know, you brought up how lengthy my fantastic presentations with Nancy are. Appreciate that.
I think Joe's heard them more than anyone in this Eastern community, you know that?
He's an honorary member of PACE.
You could give it, next time we'll just let him give it.
Right. Tell us when you're ready, Chris.
Okay, sorry.
It's all right. Nancy, this is not counted out of my 15 minutes. Just making sure. All right.
You know that, right?
I do know that, I definitely know that. Do you know how funny 15 minutes is? There's no chance that I could ever just stop at 15.
Well, we know that. That's okay.
No, we try and play you, but they don't.
Okay.
Back to Plan A.
Back to Plan A.
All right.
Okay.
Get her. Does that look okay, Joe? Sure. Perfect. So, thank you so much, first of all, for having us. Really appreciate your support, your engagement, whether it's been at our open houses or just in general, helping us get the message out for PACE has really been appreciated. Tonight, we are here with a shorter presentation. So if there are people that are online that are just hearing about the PACE Committee, please go to the website. We have been meeting for nine months now.
Since August.
Since August, so tons of times, there are thousands of pages of information. There are very extensive presentations, one that was given publicly at the Blanche Ames House, a second that was given publicly at the Blanche Ames House at the Queenson House, one that was given publicly at Blanche Ames that have a tremendous amount of information. So please, don't take some of the high-level commentary that we will make today as just keeping it high-level. We have, all of our information is fact-checked with publicly available sources, whether it was DESI, whether it was the DOR. But we have links to all of, any information that's referenced. So today is just, again, we have presented this to you folks. You have digested a lot more than the average people and we are really just fulfilling our charge as a committee, which is to provide an official recommendation for promoting a sustainable Easton. And we have also, I would say, done extra credit since we're in the educational environment. And we have put forth what many other towns and communities have also committed to, which is a community compact, which is what we're specifically here to ask you all tonight to vote in your support. We will try to keep it fresh. We have presented to the Select Board this week, Fin Finance Committee last night. We're here tonight. And thankfully, those boards and committees also voted unanimously to support the community compact, as did the PACE Committee in putting it together. Nancy will speak in length about that. So tonight, we have, if you don't mind going to the next slide, very quickly, just those two things to talk to you about, you'd think it won't take long, but it will. The next slide, so we have left this up, it was given at our Blanche Ames presentation. We have left this up as an introductory slide because it truly speaks to what promoting a sustainable Easton has been focused on. It speaks to candidly that we have a budget and we talk about numbers and financial consequences. The reality is that a budget always reflects the policies and values of any organization that it's identified for. And so for Easton, it has been very clear that our community stands for some very valuable and noble things, whether it was history, whether it's open space and recreation, whether it's education. And you can see that time and time again with our residents and their support and their voting to always try to support, do the best they can for our community. It also reflects part of the dynamic of what we, as residents in Easton, have created. We are undoubtedly a residential-forward community. 72% of our income is derived from property tax. We welcome and appreciate in value single-family homes. That is what we are. There is no changing the stripes of the zebra. The challenge with that, as you will see, is that in times of external pressures, it is very difficult for us to adjust revenue because in Massachusetts, your revenue on property tax is constrained by what's called Prop 2.5. So it means our largest revenue base can only increase by law 2.5% plus new growth. That reflects part of the dynamic tension we experienced as a PACE Committee. Because the first thing we asked residents at our open houses was what do you appreciate about Easton? And unanimously, the first thing was open space, recreation, education, history, everything we love about Easton. The first thing when you ask them about what do you find challenging about Easton is I wish there was new growth. And then I, I will just give you some context. So we say we would love new growth. I can tell you I attended the planning committee when we were looking to put in and are looking to put in Taco Bell and Chipotle at Five Corners and drive-throughs. There were 30 to 50 people there saying they did not want those put in because of the traffic, the safety concerns, and the drive-through, and how much activity would go on at night. This is not to say those people are wrong. And as a matter of fact, I'll be very clear about something right now. There is no wrong in our presentation. There is nothing wrong that we have done, I, I will look anybody in the eye, from a school committee, a select board, a town administrator, a school superintendent on a macro level, that we are misspending money and we have oodles of money and oodles of people and we have funded more aggressively than any other community or even the average of the communities or even the average of the state. We haven't across every one of those factors. And we have the information, the data to show you whether it's comparing last year, last five years, last 10 years, comparable community set that DESI gives you, DART is the name. The comparable community set of people around us, the comparable community set of people that have the same commercial residential split, meaning, like, we had 19 people in our committee that all had a wildly different viewpoint as to how we should pay ourselves. And we spent 25 hours, four or five meetings, comparing against different comparable sets. And the answer is the same. It's the same as it was in 2017 with the operational audit. It's the same as it was in 2020 when the Budget Cell Committee did a comprehensive review. It was on the precipice of recommending an override, at the time 4.2 million. And it's the same from what we found, which is fundamentally, Easton spends less on any major department, especially the schools, than both our comparable communities and against the state average. Equally true, just so that very leet, that kind. Our residents are not wrong when they say they pay high taxes. They pay the second highest dollar tax bill than any of the surrounding communities, second only to Shaker. It's roughly $8,652. And it will go up when we bring full-on the public safety project. Now, a couple of things in full transparency. We have the highest tax bill. Part of it is because we have the second highest home value. So when people say, well, Easton has a $300 less average tax bill, you're right, but you have $450,000 more on average in equity in your home. That doesn't make it easier for people because that's more of an exit, when I sell my home, I get that benefit. It doesn't change that this year, people will be feeling a material impact to their taxes. And it doesn't change that if we do this operational override, it will only be more of an impact. I tell those people that you, we, we created this, like, there's no blame. We want a residential-forward community. We didn't want marijuana to come into our community. I don't, I'm not judging any of those, but that was $700,000 of revenue, right? We like to have our lot size what it is. We like conservation policies that are more strict than the state requires us to have. So by definition, we have created an environment that is difficult to adjust your revenue stream because 72% of our income is only residential-based Prop 2.5 government. So if we could, I just want to marry that all of these things are awesome. That's what makes Easton home value go up faster than our surrounding communities. But they also create an inherent challenge for us that we'll talk about just as the next slide here. So, the state has been doing great in terms of revenue growth because they get a tax every time something's sold. And things that are being sold have gone up in inflationary terms, right? So when they, we sell a water heater, buy it, it's 10% higher than it was last year and the state gets that increase flowing through because of, you know, the state tax, right? We don't. We are constrained at 2.5. We're rolling off COVID-related relief programs and I'm probably preaching to the choir, but the benefits of those programs were to bring people on to help our kids in educational settings, help navigate some of the emotional and mental challenges and mental health issues that COVID brought on. And candidly, I can speak firsthand, those have not gone away. I, I think that it's more important now than ever. And what we communicate, at least on the town side when we're speaking behalf of the challenge, we know that investment in children earlier to catch them when their challenges arise saves money down the road. Like, we appreciate that investment. We also appreciate that we are not doing things like having multiple languages early on in educational careers like other communities may have access to. And so we're not all the way to bright and we know that there's benefit when communities can do that, the earlier the better. So we know the state has not helped us as well. I'll give you some other aspects. So not only are, is our revenue capped at 2.5%, but 15 years ago, the state was 25 cents of every one of our dollars in terms of revenue. It's now 13 cents, so it's been cut in half. 2008 unrestricted general government aid, we still have not got back to the pure dollars of 2008, let alone inflation-adjusted. The other thing, and you folks know this better than most, but Chapter 70 funds. You know, I, I will say, just numerically, we have this conversation and dialogue as a community about $30 versus $70 versus $100. I just want you to know, all of those are not good answers for us. $30 gets you 0.2% increase on that revenue. $100 gets you 0.7% increase on that revenue. None of that helps us when your cost structure is going up 5, 6, 7%. When your health insurance goes up by 10% and 13% year after year, going up 0.2% or 0.7% is nowhere near enough. So yes, I want it to be 100, I want it to be 300. But the reality is, and I know you folks know this stat, but last year, all of the revenue increase from Chapter 70 that was distributed to communities and towns, largely 36 of them benefited from that, mostly cities like New Bedford, Boston. And that the rest, there are 351 towns and communities in Easton, did not benefit. Right?
Massachusetts, yes.
I'm off Easton, can I say that, yeah? It's been a long trip. So you got that, right? So I need everybody to appreciate, this is, this is fact. The state has told you, you have your own solution. They've told you it. Your solution, and it has been spoken about in Boston Blow articles, it's been spoken about since it was put into place, is you can execute an operational override. And they have specifically told Easton for a long time that, look, you're a minimum-made community longer than most. And I think we even indexed, and I'm gonna get this wrong, but there's like a multiplication factor for teachers. Did I, is that even, might even in the ballpark?
Yeah, the wage adjustment factor.
Wage adjustment factor, which is code for multiplication adjustment number, right? So, but like, they told us to go pound sand with that even earlier because we were impacted by that. So the state has spoken very clearly about the ability for towns and cities to execute, generate additional revenue, especially when you're residential-forward, because we have no way to flex. We just don't. We can't shift it to a commercial tax base. And as much as we all say we want more commercial, the reality is, when you try to develop that, that it's very difficult. One-third of our town as well, we get what we ask for. One-third of our town is protected from tax. That's huge. So not only is the other two-thirds largely residential, the one-third you have left is largely untaxable. And if you're looking for private parcels to build on that are like individuals, there's two that are larger than 13 acres that are dry in the entire town. Now, the good news is, is the industrial park, which is great. We finally just got approved as a relationship to tie into the Brockton sewer. That's awesome. All I can tell you is that you should be telling all of your elected officials, go get as much new growth as you can get because there'll, no way you can get enough to actually fix your fundamental problem. You'll be back having this discussion every roughly, potentially, four to seven years, depending upon the levels of new growth, depending upon the inflationary factors that you have in terms of cost structure. And it's not a bad conversation to have, but for example, I hope that this conversation generates more engagement, especially the community compact, for things like, please, show up and go to the Conservation Commission, go to the planning meetings and talk about what you want as a resident in terms of new growth. If you really want new growth. Not one person, I think people know I have chaired the Community Preservation Committee, not one person has ever showed up to us and one, one of our tenants is preserving open space. Instead, we'd like you to preserve less open space. So we want people to understand that there are ways to engage, there are ways to share with the school committee and the select board your opinions and hopefully influence public policy. Because we have what we, what we ask for, a residential-forward community, that by the way, crushes it. Like, we do so much more with less. Expense challenges, and I hit on some of these, but just to frame some of the challenge, obviously, it's way more than 2.5% revenue. But utilities, healthcare costs, transportation, repairs and maintenance, they're just going up at such an incredible rate. In fact, health insurance is $2 million over the last two years. If you add in pensions, property insurance and other school assessments, it's gone up 3.6 million in the last two years. So that's not giving better programs. That's not adding more teachers, that's not adding more townspeople doing work. That's just like, oh, my utility bill went up, like, I still gotta have electricity. So when people ask, like, why 7 million, it's so much, which is what we're recommending for an override, 7.3 million, they are right. They already have a high tax bill. I take nothing away from their comment. But when you add context that, well, right away, $3.6 million simply goes to pay for things we can't avoid. And then they say things, which is just great, like, be curious is one of the big things I want to all take away and encourage your constituents. Like, we'll make it cost less. Actually, we did. We joined the GIC years ago and saved hundreds of thousands of dollars. We, we electrified with solar, fast. We put in LED lights. By the way, we also were smart enough to aggregate electricity purchases on behalf of the residents. We also were smart enough to advocate for opting everybody in. People showed up and said, don't do it, which I respect, you're taking away my rights, don't do it. We saved everybody since inception $1,840 every single year. So I don't think most residents know that, but on average, every resident got back $1,840. That's massive, like, that's massive. Because we signed right before COVID and we got such a low rate and after COVID, rates shot through the roof. So the town is working real hard to get new growth, they're working real hard to save new money, they're working real hard to be more efficient. Just, I don't know where you guys are at, have you seen Connor's budget memo number two?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I want to talk about just three things if I could, because it gives you context for the size of the override. The three things are, when we compare ourselves against our surrounding communities for a spend per capita, which is per resident, the police, if you just brought them up to the next community, like, not even the average of our comparable set, just the next one, it would be $15 more per resident. And for fire, it would be $32 more per resident. And for general government, it would be $47 more per resident. That doesn't sound real. That would be $2.4 million of more spend. Just to get closer to the next laggard, like, as you know, we're like second in comparable communities last in terms of spend per resident. That is not a bad thing. Love Yankee frugality, ingenuity and efficiency. But it gets to a point, I just want to emphasize for you, like, the adage of cutting bone has already been so far past. No matter, with reductions, it's going to be really people, that's 85% of our spend. And I think you all remember that from prior presentations. To give you greater context, if we just did town spend of the state average, it would be another $10 million worth of revenue. If you just did school spend of state average, it would be another $12 million. I think you know this, but we're the second lowest amongst our surrounding communities. I think we talked about, if we just spent to our nearest neighbor, Stoughton, it would be another $5.6 million. We're the fourth lowest spend per pupil amongst our 10 comparable DART communities. And so, and then the rub is, even with the money we are spending, it's less effective because you're paying for things like insurance, which is not unimportant, love it, but it's not going to get you more resolved programs and services. The other thing is, just in case you were wondering about staff, we want to reemphasize, we absolutely have the fewest staff across the board for police, fire, DPW. And we are either low to mid-range in terms of staffing levels or average with administration, with the amount of leadership we have in our schools. We literally went to each school of all of our surrounding communities and counted how many principals, vice- Uh, we literally went to each school of all of our surrounding communities and counted how many principals, vice principals. Uh, all that good stuff, administration and all that good stuff. Um, and we know that the largest positions that have been added over the last three years, not just school-wide but town-wide. Are power professionals number one and teachers number two. So, the money is going to the front lines on average. Um, so that people can appreciate where we have added people in positions over time, which makes sense. Because in a large part, a lot of the upper funds were specifically supported by those positions or designed to support those positions. Um, I don't know if I have one more slide, I think I have one more slide? I do, it's simple. Um, so that, we arrived at an eight point one million dollar, um, total challenge. Uh, we looked at roughly, how long will this get us? It's about three to four years before you start to have fundamental challenges again. Um, not that you can't get through those years, but you're probably gonna have conversations about what, where, where are we at? And, and I'll, I'll give you, uh, why I say you probably. Look, if the next three years of expense are like the last two, you're gonna be having a conversation. If your revenue picture doesn't dramatically change. I don't think your revenue picture will dramatically change in the next two years. I'm hopeful in years three and four, a couple of things might happen. One, that there is a growing chorus of discontent amongst communities about chapter seventy. I'm hopeful there's a fundamental reset, and I just wanna thank the school committee, Dr. Cabral, and certainly the entire school leadership team, Dr. Prue, uh, Dr. Pruitt. I'll make you a doctor, see? See, you're passing him out.
One year.
But keep up with talking to the state. Like, we have to get chapter seventy funds changed. It's not our total solve. We have to get the industrial park online, like, it's, it's, it's a have to. The other thing is, I think we have to probably come to an understanding as a community that there could be benefits in other larger developments. I'm just gonna throw it out there. I'm not sure anybody, so I live near Piquanica. Clover Valley Farm is one of the CPA's targeted areas to preserve. I can tell you that the offset could be a couple hundred houses that are two to three million dollars worth of new revenue. Same thing with the dozens, maybe hundreds of acres that are behind one thirty-eight, the Marshall Farm property. That is a targeted CPA preservation location, but.
Is it, isn't Clover Farm, Clover Lee Farm, whatever, isn't it privately owned?
It is, yeah, but when it's farmland, in the, uh, when you are designated as a farm area, the city and town that you are in has first right of refusal. And you have to back pay all the taxes. So often, that's a role that the CPA actively plays, which is to make sure we have an opportunity, and so the town couldn't fund that, candidly. The CPA couldn't fund all of them. But we as residents have leveraged the CPA to preserve a material amount of open space. And I think it's for the betterment of our community. You know, our recipe works, our home values have gone up materially, so the recipe works. But if you don't wanna have a revenue problem in four years and five years, something has to give somewhere. You, I hope we go to Concom and the planning committee and work proactively with them to preserve what makes Easton special. But maybe there's room around the edges. Like, I'll give you an example, and I don't know if this is true, so, nobody hold me accountable, but hypothetically. Let's say there's a, there's forty accessible acres that are blocked off by an eighth of an acre access. And we can't build over that in a protected way because of our policies. Well, maybe we can go back and revisit that. Like, is there a way to access the forty acres that we wanna build on and have a community in and continue new growth in in a fashion that matches Easton's expectations? But we know we have to find a way to bridge this eighth of an acre access point. That's just an example of, like, wetlands create boundary restrictions. So there's a lot of, and, and we have voted for this as residents. So, so they didn't do this, like, very clear, nobody did this to you. We voted at some town meeting at some point a long time ago to have conservation restrictions that are more aggressive than the state. And on average, I support that, like, I think it's great, we love open spaces, I hike in Borderland, we have dogs, we have kids that have grown up here. So I think it's great, I just wonder, given our challenges, can we go talk about that? And is there opportunities to preserve what makes us special, but enable some more meaningful new growth? Um, so, you know, uh, uh, I think it's real important that residents appreciate, our community appreciates, we created this. Our votes have created this. In nineteen seventy-five, we all voted not to install sewer. That would have been paid eighty-five to ninety-five percent by the federal government. Like, we could have had sewer everywhere. And instead, fifty years later, we have three million, multimillion dollar projects. That enable us to now develop those corridors with restaurants and businesses that wanna come in, because now there's sewer. So, I don't judge that, like, that was, they made that decision, and we're probably better for it on average in terms of home value. But I kinda sometimes wish they had put in sewer, when it would have been paid for. Um, so, and a lot of communities do, so there's no, this is a no judgment zone. It's really just saying that the challenge we face today didn't happen because last year we decided to do a public safety building. Last year, we, as a community, voted for it. Because in two thousand thirteen, as a community, we voted to do a study on our, all of our buildings, because they were getting so old. In two thousand fifteen, we voted to prioritize the list. In two thousand seventeen, we voted to fund studies of, should it just be one building or three buildings or four buildings? In two thousand twenty-one, we voted to appropriate the funds and finish off the designs. And we told everybody, it's probably coming in two to four years. So it was not a, um, it was not planned to have a debt exclusion last year. Um, and then follow it with an operational override, and why didn't you know better, you should have planned better? These things take ten years to, they take a long time to bring to fruition. Is it, does it still sting? Yeah. I, I, I hate having to replace my roof and then finding out my Comcast bill goes up the way it does, and Verizon goes up. And I don't like it, but I have to do capital things. And the reality is, I one hundred percent appreciate our residents supporting our community for the next hundred years. Because the buildings they replaced were fifty to seventy-five to eighty years old. And every so often, you have to do it, otherwise, your community, it stagnates, it doesn't continue to make progress. And it just becomes harder for future generations to bear the cost of the bill. And if you saw Connor's presentation.
I was just gonna say, administrator reads comments on the inflationary costs that have happened to communities that have waited for these construction projects. What would have been three hundred dollars a square foot is well over a thousand dollars a square foot. And there are communities that are building one elementary school and the tax increase is a thousand dollars to each resident for that. So, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I, it's, it's, it's. The opportunity cost was there for us, and, and I think Easton took it and should be grateful that we took it. Because we'd be talking about, I think Connor quotes, a two hundred and fifty million dollar public safety project. Rather than the one that's right now, um, the bid has come in under cost.
Right.
We say, don't wanna count the chickens before they hatch, but it, it has come in under the cost, so, just as Blanche Ames ended up, so.
So, yeah, it would have cost us sixty, seventy million dollars more if we started that project tonight. Um, the other thing, uh, I'll just, um, end on this, uh, two things. One, how we calculated it was a really democratic process. All nineteen people were, um, given the opportunity to vote, the majority did. Um, and most of the challenge was between seven and nine million, which is good. After, since starting in August, nineteen different opinions, people, different viewpoints. Having a tight range means we all saw the data the same way. We all basically felt the problem, averaged out to eight million. And the fact that everybody was largely, this is a revenue side problem. That's, that was almost unanimous, almost unanimous. Um, so, this is just the averages, so we don't, we didn't really find eight hundred thousand dollars, that's not what it's designed for. We did like it though, because it does challenge people, and when you get to the community compact, you're gonna hear. That we actually are recommending some very difficult objectives to be reached over the next five years. Um, the last thing I wanna do is I'll end mine on a human note. No matter what happens on May nineteenth, there will be somebody that will be materially, detrimentally impacted. There will be somebody in this community that can no longer afford to live here if it's passed. That is a fact. It might be your neighbor, it might be somebody that you know, a veteran, might be somebody on fixed income. Might just be somebody who can't make it work. And that's a truth, that is a truth. There are a lot of programs that are available for people of low income, veterans and seniors. Please, we're working with the town to have a dedicated website now. Uh, Connor has really done a great job so that people have access to this. We have voted to dedicate more funds to it, people can work off their tax bill. And I say all those nice things, somebody will not be able to afford to live in Easton. On the flip side, there are a material percentage of people that will no longer work for our community. That will lose their jobs if you don't pass it. And in the worst case, there is a material percentage of people that live in our community and work for our towns and schools. That may lose their job and pay higher taxes. There's just no way around the reality, and I just wanna reemphasize and bring it full circle, nobody did anything wrong. We spend less on average across police, fire, DPW, school. We seemingly have done more with less for an incredibly long time. So, I would just encourage you and everybody, be curious, don't be judgmental, don't say they. Just remember how you or we can make a difference in our local town politics, in local town policy and government. Show up to meetings, express your opinion, help elected officials know what you feel from a policy perspective. And that will set us up for the conversations that'll probably come in five years to be much better. Um, the, um, compact that you're about to hear was three public meetings. With nineteen PACE members hashing out all of the potential, um, agreements that we wanna, commitments we would ask you all to adopt as well. Um, and we looked at dozens of communities who have done this in the past for idea generation. So, I'll let Nancy take it away.
Pretty soon I won't have to give my presentation.
I'm gonna stop, I saw the wing.
Did you see me? Look at that!
Saw the wing.
And I just wanna say one more thing on this slide before we leave, and that is, um. You know, as Tom said, the, the fact that not only we came together, nineteen folks, so close in these numbers. But also the fact that we have come together in this, um, point towards a revenue solution. Is particularly interesting, because there are many folks who started very skeptical. They started the committee with, I know there's money to be found, I know this is an expense side solution. So, and that was good, because that created an enormous, healthy conversation, a real deep dive into these things. So I think that's just really notable. So, as, um, Tom referenced, this community compact is something that, um, we do consider extra credit. Because it is outside of our charge, which was just to look at all of this, build a consensus and to offer a solution. And state a figure if we felt that it was a, a revenue side. The community compact, however, is a wonderful tool. It's something that has been adopted by many communities. And does so is really almost like a negotiation or a compact between the town departments and our residents. So for folks who are saying, I wanna make sure that there's continued fiscal responsibility in this, this is what this compact does for folks. So this reflects the committee's belief that these key commitments should be made to the residents of Easton if they pass an override. So these commitments only are true when an override passes. And remember, that has to pass two things, it has to pass at the town meeting, voters have to pass it. And then it has to pass a ballot vote. And that ballot vote, I think is formally now set for, um, June tenth, right? That's been published and everything, so those two things have to happen. Remember in two thousand sixteen, we were successful with one of those, with the town meeting and not with the ballot vote. I think a similar thing happened in Norton. So we have to make sure that folks are showing up to, to both of those things and, and really caring to support this. It addresses this structural revenue gap and maximizes the benefit of both an override. By committing to six primary objectives that are aimed at encouraging the continued fiscal responsibility. Sustainable growth, which was another charge for the PACE community, don't just fix this year, set us up going forward. Um, and protect the town's residents. Recognizing that you can have extraordinary circumstances like a natural disaster, a public health emergency, or some type of state mandate coming down. Or an economic crisis, there is an opportunity to review these commitments. And that can be done by any of the signatory boards, which is the select board, the school committee and the finance committee. Um, and that those need to be done at a public hearing, so that the public can participate, um, unions can participate. Thank you, Chrissy. So I'm gonna just quickly, um, talk about these six things. And I know the school committee has in front of you the full compact, it was shared with you. Um, and these are available to residents or folks, anyone watching, um, online, so I'm just highlighting these six. Um, please stop me if you have any questions, but otherwise, I'll kinda just go through them. The first one, and, oh, and again, as Tom said, we looked at numerous other scenarios where this was done for other towns. And I think there was sort of a total of fifteen different elements that were part of these different things. But not all of them relevant to Easton, not all of them important to residents. So that's where it took hours and hours to examine each of these things and see which we thought would be, um, most powerful for our voters and most relevant to Easton. And the first is that there be a commitment that there is no debt exclusion. Remember where we build capital projects with that for five years, or operational override for at least four years. Okay, so that's a commitment that we would hope that we could make to our residents unless there are unforeseen circumstances. Secondly, the Economic Development Council that exists would really, um, sort of have a refocus on land use and infrastructure. To have pro-growth policies and practices, so some of the things that Tom outlined, really looking at, what's the CPC doing? Um, what is the zoning board doing? What is our conservation committee doing? And that further, there would be seats on that committee, this Economic Development Committee, by those very key land use and regulatory boards. Um, so we were asking this committee to bolster its growth efforts. And evaluate any existing policies to identify areas for improvement. Remember, these things cannot be done by a committee alone, they have to be brought to town meeting, they have to be voted by residents and approved by residents. But it's time to have the conversation, I think Tom outlined a really interesting example of sometimes a small easement or conservation, um, easement. Is preventing a larger development of land, maybe the right thing, but that, that conversation should occur. This slide has numbers three and four of the six commitments. And this third one is something, again, it was already alluded to. Trying to minimize the impact to vulnerable populations like seniors, veterans and individuals with disabilities. Um, at the Blanche Ames presentation, if you've seen it, and all those slides are available online, or if you were, um, able to attend, and thank you for being there. We had two hundred people, I mean, it was just wonderful. We started a queasit house with seventy, and you know, each time, I think we're gonna have to go to Gillette Stadium next time, we might have Taylor Swift open, I don't know, it's gonna just be something. But, um, the, you know, we had a whole, you'll be able to go to that one? So that, that, we had a whole slide of all of the opportunities in Easton for these populations. Some folks didn't even know about them. So we need to do a better educational effort, and as Tom said, you know, the, the, um, town is gonna have a website. Um, residents can go to the Council on Aging, go to Town Hall, there's many places that they can look to for resources. So to better educate people about these resources and then expand them wherever possible. You know, we also haven't talked about that, um, donation opportunity. That on your tax bill, there's always an opportunity to donate, if you're able to, um, to this fund, to help others in your community, if you're able to do that. And that's programs that have been going on for a while.
It has.
I don't know, it's exactly year, but.
Two thousand seventeen.
Oh, great, great. Um, oh yeah, probably at the time of the audit, people said, okay, this is one thing you can do.
Actually, Mark Lynn and I brought it up as select board members.
Didn't even know that, set you up for that, great. So, you know, wonderful opportunity. Budget efficiencies and annual caps, this is really a rigorous one. We are suggesting that town and school budgets will be capped at a rolling two-year average, not to exceed four percent growth. Are you squirming in your seats? This is really difficult. This is not like we gave them an open checkbook. This is gonna be very, very difficult to do, talk about a rigorous measure. We just talked about some of the inflationary numbers that are out there. Some of the fixed costs, like, um, school assessments or special education situations where we have to outplay students to give them the right educational experience. Those things have gone up enormously, a lot more than four percent. Um, and that there would be some exceptions for mandated services, but that we would ask both departments. To provide a mitigation plan by the third quarter of that fiscal year to say how they would offset those costs. In their other non-mandated programs and services. Uh, they do that now, I mean, they have to do that now, right? There's times that an unexpected thing comes up and you have to figure out where to get that money. So again, a real transparency where, where we're asking the departments to do that. Okay, and then finally, um, number five, protecting the town's financial reserves and shielding our bond rating. These are really important fiscal matters, may not sort of be in the forefront of everyone's mind. But free cash reserves, it's like, you know, spending your savings account on operational things that are repeated. Um, if this override passes, the compact states that no free cash would be used in the full year two thousand, uh, twenty twenty-six. In twenty twenty-seven, that free cash would be limited to only fifteen percent. And that in subsequent years, its use would comply with existing financial policies, which I can tell you are both larger than this zero or fifteen percent. But again, really making sure that the usage, um, is. But again, really making sure that the usage is something that continues to help us build these reserves and not deplete them when we use them for operating budgets. Health insurance and these OPEC liabilities, we have mentioned the incredible increase in inflationary costs of health insurance. So the town has already begun to address this inflationary growth by looking at liabilities and obsessing, excuse me, assessing premium contribution rates. So looking at annual required contribution rates and reducing this long-term unfunded liability. Capital asset funding, another problem. You know, sometimes you go to town meeting and they're looking at operational money, talking about moving of accounts to spend on capital, like that's just not financially responsible. So the town will prioritize use of free cash when required to support capital needs, things like a police vehicle, school technology, road repairs, but continue to build our stabilization fund rather than using free cash for operational expenses. The town may discontinue using free cash for capital purchase is another way to maintain long-term financial stability. So all of these things are really geared at making sure that the town's bond rating is held very, very high so that when we do have to do a big project and borrow, we're also not penalized on that side. And years ago, our stabilization fund was very low, and in 2017, that was one of the recommendations right by the audit committee, is you need to build this up. And it's confusing for some people because they see a healthy stabilization fund, seven million right now, is it eight million?
I wanna say six.
Six figures.
Six mid.
Something. So six million, okay. And they say, well, gosh, you know, your problem is about six million, why aren't you just using that? I mean, that would be a disaster to not have that money, A, available for any of our needs, but B, what it does to the town's bond rating would really cause the town challenges in the future. And finally, some measurement and accountability on this. Everyone on the PACE committee felt very strongly on this, that at the time that the town and schools submit their annual budgets, this time of year, we'll be hearing from those departments for their formal last budgets, the school committee next week on the third, right? Is that April 3rd? And then the public hearings for the town on April 29th, that if, in the subsequent years, as they submit those, that they must include a narrative that outlines and explains how they've either hopefully advanced these budget commitments, met them, or if they fell short, what the plan is for that. So again, some very rigorous accountability, and the link there, when you look at this presentation, is the link on the full community pledge that I've just sort of highlighted the key points. So our goal is that this gives the residents some assurance, some comfort, that the financial responsibility in this town, that again, PACE has shown, has done really well in decision-making and planning, just continues through this process. In other words, they're really getting some assurance for their money spent in this up two and a half override.
For all the residents that are wondering, like, is this real? That's been a question we've gotten a lot. You should look at Town Administrator Reed's budget memo update too, and you'll learn that it is real, that if we do not get an override, that we will have many nights, most nights, one ambulance and not two. And your second ambulance will come from town support. The other thing that will happen in terms of, there'll be police reductions, be a detective reduction, there'll be less cases closed, and it will be difficult to have two emergency events go on at night at the same time, because you need to have X number of people at each event, and at times there'll only be three cars on, which would make a challenge, because now you go to one event that's an emergency with two cars, the second emergency comes in, the third car can't engage until another one of the other cars gets there. That's real. The town pool is currently slated for closure, that's real. You can no longer pay your bill at Town Hall whenever you want, they've reduced that position, that's real. That's come out in two of your bills. How do I mute it?
Just noise.
Yeah.
It was Nancy probably trying to get me to quiet.
Did you see?
So if you want it to be real, like, it's real. We already have the least amount of services. We already leverage, from a fire department perspective, utilizing other towns to cover for us, more than other towns use us. Becomes a risk when you start asking your neighbor for all the groceries and not just sugar. They start to not like you. So we are feeling it, I just want you all to know that. It's real, you can go onto the budget administrator's website, you can see it. Couple other things, do want to express appreciation, six of the seven town unions have agreed to a one-year extension for staying within a 2% budget. That helps give some stability. Again, it's just another year. But I would just let you know that this $7 million is not money that will go towards growth. The first $3 million, $3.5 million of it will simply stop us from using our savings account. That leaves roughly $4 million to cover all the other things that are going up naturally, like $2 million per year in health insurance, and pension adjustments, and annuities, and property, all that good stuff. So the $7 million doesn't, I'm just being transparent, it doesn't get you ahead. I just won't want people to walk away from that. Like, it doesn't. It stops you from going materially further back. The last thing I just want to point out, and you thought you were done because the slides were all done, but surprise. I just want to make sure that you folks can appreciate something on our behalf, if I can frame them. I don't know where they went. Oh, here they are. So, yeah, Nancy does hide it. We're gonna ask your help, because we've been working for a long period of time since August, five-hour meetings. On January 8th, we had the Queeset House open house. On February 26th, we had the Blanche Ames open house. March 3rd, we did an open Q and A at Town Hall for people to just walk in. On March 4th, we presented to FinCom publicly. March 5th, we presented at the Ames Free Library, nick credit to Nancy and Patrick. March 7th, Friday, 7th, 14th, and 21st, we had one-hour open sessions at Dunkin' Donuts in the morning from 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM. March 8th, we had another free library event, March Ames Free Library event for two hours. We had two open houses at the Frothingham Hall for seniors to attend. We went to three school events, thank you so much for welcoming us to all of them, and had tables at them. And I can genuinely say that when I look around at our team of nineteen, that we're all really tired. This is the second, second of third weeks that Nancy and I have been out for five nights in a row. We love it, I'm not, it's not a complaint, it's actually just a request. So we expect to hold one more open house. So we're, we're done with our charge, but we still want to keep going, so we're gonna hold one more open house. We would love for the school committee to actually have a staffed table. If you believe passionately, like we do, in the importance of this issue, we would really welcome you engaging with the residents, putting yourself out there, because a lot of people are probably really tired, I'm hearing from Tom Broussard, but they would really probably appreciate the relationships you've built with them throughout all the time you've been here. And you can share with them knowledge that most people probably don't have access to, and you can probably help them appreciate the impact in a way that most people can't. So we would just ask you to be willing to consider staffing a table yourselves, we would welcome that. We would ask you to continue to invite us to events, we'll come, we want to talk to people. We find often, and Nancy's said this so many times, I talked to somebody today, and boy, they were not curious, they were mad, angry, and judgmental. Then they called me the next day, and they were curious. They were like, you know, all right, Nancy, I thought you were kind of full of baloney, but, can I talk about this? And then like, oh, like, all right, I didn't get that, or, you know...
Tell me about this inflation.
Yeah.
You know, it starts with, you know, they start with, who spent the money? And I'm like, no one spent the money. And then two, now tell me about this inflation. And so that's all we ask for, is engagement, and you know, you folks, everyone has a different constituency in this town, our friends, and to talk with them. And you know, at the end of the day, people have to vote what's right for their household, what's right for their family, but we just want them to do that as informed voters, you know, understanding what the issue is, and understanding what's at risk, you know, and not voting against the override when they don't have the right information about it. That's, that's our goal.
We, we know you guys have a big meeting next week, come, next week, April 3rd. Can't keep track of days, doctor. But I just want you to know, we'll be here to support you. I don't necessarily, we don't need to have an hour and a half of your time again, but we are here to support you. We, of the people in this community that know well-roundedly where all the money goes, where all the revenues would go, we're happy to be a resource for you as you go through it. We would just implore you, you have a very difficult job, and we just want to thank you for doing it. You folks are the largest amount of spend in our community, rightly so, absolutely valid. You get far less than other communities get per student, so we appreciate that you guys do more with less as teachers, as educators, as leaders. But we'll be here next week, just in the background, but if there's anything we can do to help you prepare, or you have questions, or anything, we're happy to help you. We know probably way to, as much, more than we ever thought we would know about our community.
Can you remind me, what was the date we were targeting for the last open house? Was it that first week of May?
Don't know. We didn't, we weren't gonna announce it last night because we weren't sure, and we didn't want anybody to listen in and hear the wrong one.
Yeah.
But it wa, it was hopefully in May, because we think at the April 3rd meeting, things will get very real for a lot of people from an educational perspective, and then that way, hopefully that will galvanize people's engagement, and they can come and look, talk to us, ask questions. The, the hard part is that the math equation, the problem, nobody is wrong. It's, it's, look, I don't know, maybe we could argue on the edges about a position, or we could argue on the edges about the timing or this, but we just have fundamentally so much less revenue than other communities have. And we fundamentally spend so much less than other communities do, that, that's just a, it's a reality, that we're hoping through education and information, people can at least vote on May 19th with a really good, strong foundation of knowledge. I'll be quiet now.
Please switch seats, and then we can discuss the compact, see if you have any questions, and then we're gonna vote on that. Thank you, guys, excellent presentation.
And we'd be remiss if we didn't thank our team, like nineteen people. If we did a good job, it's because they did a great job.
Someone has one.
I gave mine back, it's usually Nancy who steals things.
Nancy had mine. I gave mine back to Chris. Okay. Wow, I'm being pet, John.
Getting cranky doing this session, right?
Ruth is getting pashy, right?
Oh, you used to bring in like candies and stuff.
You have your own now.
I mean, you know, bringing flowers.
No.
Yeah. No, no flowers.
Bring snack bars, it's just really, like, fresh up.
All right. So any questions or comments from the committee about the presentation or the compact? And I actually have my notes about the compact, so I can tell you if there's anything particular that Tom and Nancy don't know, but of course they will know. So go ahead, I know Lauren, you have some questions?
So I don't really have questions, I more have comments, but thank you so much. I appreciate the time, the total time that you've, you've put into this, everybody, Jen included. And I appreciate this very thoughtful approach. And I think it's gonna be a real challenge, and it's really frustrating for me to have gone to the State House and had conversations about the amount of money that we receive from the state with our legislatures. And then to hear it from the state, and it's, I'm trying not to sound like a whiny child, but it, it's just not fair. Like, it, it's like the mandates come in of things that they're forcing us to do, but yet they're not helping us compensate, and they're, they receive our tax money and we're not getting it back in return. And it's, it's just, has to be a better way. And so we'll keep on fighting and, and, and going to the State House and, and talking to our elected officials and...
Yeah, and there are, fortunately, there are multiple, there are multiple groups who are really coalescing around this who have reached out, and I, I just got something today, actually, to forward to you. I don't know if we all got it, but I'll forward it if we didn't, but, you know, groups that are specifically looking for statements about how the state funding formula is impacting their community and their budget. So we certainly have a lot, an awful lot to say about that, and there are thankfully groups that are, you know, across the state that are gathering that support so that we are going to the state not just as one community out of 351, but as...
Because this is not an Easton issue to solve.
Exactly, exactly, yep, yep, yes.
So, I'm sorry.
Hopefully that momentum will build.
I actually feel about this, but, thank you, that's all. Thank you very much.
Lauren, I would just add, I'll add my own personal responsibility here, and just so that residents can appreciate that they can have an impact, I never once offered to reach out to you to go with you. And I'm sure if 50 people from Easton showed up, it would be better than just you. And I only say that because I also have never attended an Economic Council Development meeting, and I need to. Like, I just want to empower residents, and I would ask you to continue to reach out to include them, because we need more residents to engage on these issues, to tell the people that we've elected that we're really being impacted by. Thank you so much. But hopefully that makes sense, and I just, please let us know when that happens, because I just feel like I'm remiss as well that I haven't gone. No judgment on me, I feel like I contribute a lot, but residents can make a difference, a huge difference in policy, when they show up and they voice how strongly they feel. So thank you for expressing that.
And likewise, I feel the same way. I've never been to a conservation committee meeting and, or conservation preservation.
You're one of the very few in Easton who haven't. I get it. But, but you'll love it.
Yeah.
You will love it.
Yes, I have, I have a few thoughts of the, of the items that you brought up, so...
Love it, no, thank you.
I, I do hope to, to attend one of your meetings.
Come on down.
So thank you.
Thanks, John. You're welcome. Jackie, and I know we have Dr. Cabral also participating remotely, so thank you for being able to join as well. Any comments or questions?
No, just thank you for another great presentation, as always, and I think the compact makes a lot of sense. Thank you for putting the time and effort into that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Same thing, thank you so much. I know the answer time, and just, this compact really makes sense, and I do hope that voters go to town meeting, first of all, and listen, and ask, and become curious, and go to the vote on June 10th, that's just so important. I believe June 10th is a Tuesday, so, you know, just get up there and vote, you know, but thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Dr. Cabral, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, they did have some... Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, yep.
No, they did a perfect job, honestly, they and the rest of the team made up of people who came in with curiosity, embraced a lot of dry information, we gave them everything they asked for and more, and they emphasized, hypothesized, probed, asked lots of really great, great questions, came to their own conclusions, and thank them enough for taking the time to do that. We try to get people engaged in the process often, but life, you know, we understand, people have a lot going on, but these are really important topics, and when it comes to a head like this, it helps to have people who are very clear-minded, educated, and really take the time to dive in the way that everyone on this committee has, and I'm just so grateful to all of them, for really the considerable amount of time that they have dedicated to this process. The citizens can feel very confident that they left no stone unturned, they were very questioning, probing, and it was appreciated beyond, beyond measure. And thank you both very much for your presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Cabral.
Thank you.
Great, so I'd like to thank you both for being here. I know you have been doing really quite the endless roadshow, and appreciate that, you know, you're doing this on top of going out and working and having the rest of your very full lives as well, and, you know, probably haven't had many dinners at home, we're senior families, frankly, for the month of March, and so I, just on behalf of the school committee and the community at large, I just want to express personal appreciation for all of the time and effort, and for your skill and expertise in presenting the material, and then during the meetings themselves, especially putting together a document as detailed and consequential as this, to have been part of the team, sitting there watching that unfold. If, you know, for any of you who work by committee professionally, you can imagine the amount of... the amount of coordination it takes to get something like this done. And thank you to fellow PACE committee members who did the heavy lifting of putting together a first draft, and then we spent many hours at our last meeting last week going through, and really, as a group of, you know, 19 people, co-editing a document, and really challenging each other, and pushing and pulling, and, and getting this to something that we could all be comfortable signing off on as the PACE committee. And then, you know, I believe we are the last of the three signatory committees to be voting on this, so, so I feel confident in the, the final product, in that we are putting to the residents of Easton a promise that if you entrust us with the additional tax dollars that we are asking for, that we are going to spend that very, very responsibly and sustainably, as was the committee's charge. So. All right. So with that, I will, if, if there's no other questions or discussion, okay. All right. So I'll make a motion then to approve the PACE compact that was presented tonight. Can I get a second?
Wiseman, second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
All right. Great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. All right. Next up, we have a vote to approve policies. So these are second readings of several policies that we reviewed in recent meetings. So we have JRA-R student records, JJA student organizations, JGG contest for students, JGH overnight student travel on motor coach, JGH-R student travel regulations, JJIB interscholastic athletics, JKA corporal punishment, JP student solicitations, JQ student fees, fines, and charges. So, any thoughts between Jackie and Nancy about, you know, moving through these? Are there any that you feel we're not ready for a final vote on, or had any additional comments on, or do we just want to take them in the order in which they appear on the agenda?
Yeah, why don't we do that? Because I had some additional comments since I wasn't able to be there last week. It's not going to really change anything. I just, I just, there was some questions I had on them.
Okay. All right. So let's start with JRA-R student records. Did you have that one, Nancy?
Oh, yeah, I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you all of these. I've seen them.
Okay.
They're fine.
All right. So Jackie, did you have any, oh, you know what?
No.
This I think we were going to remove.
Yeah, this is just a, a second reading to vote to delete, because it just restates some of the regulations.
Yes. Okay. All right. So I think that one's pretty straightforward, so I think we'll be able to just vote that when we get to that point tonight. All right. So student organizations, JJA, was there anything?
Let's see. No, we made some edits to this, I guess, so just, this is just to confirm the edits that were made and vote on them as a second reading. Nothing different than what you discussed last week.
Okay. JGG contest for students.
Nope, same thing. I think it was just, just wanted you guys to review it, just to make sure you are comfortable with the wording in it.
Mm-hmm. Yep. I felt, I felt these captured the changes. Okay. JGH, this was the overnight student travel on motor coach, and I believe this one was, did we have?
Yeah, I, I do have a question on this.
Okay.
So I know, thank you, Mrs. Pruitt, for changing the time to 6:00 AM, because that was one of my comments to, to match up with the law. But the second sentence, I just wanted to review that and make sure that is accurate. So it says, "All student trips which include late night or overnight travel that require travel between the hours of midnight and 6:00 AM on motor coaches must have a prior approval by the school committee." The second sentence says, "Initial approval by the school committee is required before engaging students in fundraising activities."
I, I'm, I'm thinking that that has to do with the fundraising policy, where, is that not...
Does it? I, I wasn't sure. I thought...
To me, this means fundraising for their trip.
For that particular trip.
Yes.
That's how I understand it as well.
Yep.
Which would coincide with the fundraising policy?
That's, that's how I, that's how I see it. I don't see Director Perez on, but...
She's on. There, she's on.
Oh, she is? Oh, there she is. Great.
Yeah, we discussed...
Yep.
We discussed this at the hour, at the subcommittee meeting, and we feel like if you would like to keep that language, it should live under the fundraising policy, not this one, because this is only talking about transport.
So delete, we're going to delete that sentence, I think, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So, all right, so we can consider voting on this with that, with the deletion of that sentence. Is that what I'm hearing?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Any committee members want to discuss that further, before we move it to the voting pile? Okay. Thank you. Okay. JGH-R student travel regulations.
No, they were just, some of the citations were, were revised, and so I think this was just the second reading, just to confirm that the revisions are all okay.
Okay. I, I actually do have a question on the contract, on the, on section one, the last sentence. "The contract with the carrier will prohibit the use of subcontractors unless sufficient notice is given to the Eastern Public Schools." Would we always be, would we always know that the driver isn't a full-time employee and is subcontracted for that particular job by the bus company?
Well, none of, none of the bus drivers are Eastern Public School employees, right?
No.
Right. They are the bus company, but...
Right.
Always full-time employees of the bus company, otherwise they're subcontractors. I, I didn't take it as subcontractor at the driver level, but just say you hired ABC Transportation, that they can't farm that out to XYZ Transportation when you have reviewed and have a contract with and have vetted ABC Transportation, and have decided that ABC Transportation meets the needs of, you know, meets all of the requirements, being able to comply, that they can't just farm that out to like some subsidiary.
Yeah.
Okay. Good question. Yeah.
I don't know if I really made sense, but, I don't know. I, I just don't think it's really a necessary sentence either to have in there.
Well, I think, I think we have to leave it in, just because we don't want them to be able to have that option, you know, that they, that if they are going to subcontract to another carrier, it has to come before the Eastern Public Schools again to review it. Do you know what I mean?
Not by a substitute person in, but actually utilizing another company to...
Right. If the, if the Acme Transportation Company, I hope there's nothing named that, but if the Acme Transportation Company is overbooked or overextended, and we contracted with them for a trip, and they don't have a bus, or they don't have a driver, that they don't reach out to the Smith Transportation Company as a subcontractor without telling us. We don't have a contract with the Smith Company, we have it with Acme, really increases our liability, our insurance coverage could be compromised, so we would want to know if they ever did that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this one? Or can we shift it to the to-be-voted pile?
Sure.
Okay. Oh, the, okay. If you want to look at the third paragraph under transportation, it says, "The administrative assistant to the superintendent will ensure that the selective carriers license for passenger transportation by the federal..."
We were leaving that there on purpose.
Where is that? That's the third paragraph down. What, what would we suggest as a...
That would be the director of operations.
Okay.
Yeah. So Tony approves all, all contracts, period, but certainly all transportation contracts, and he engages the vendors and vets, transportation vendors and such, so it would be the director of facilities and operations.
So that we can approve with noted, noted edits. Thank you. Catching up? Okay. All right. Next up is JJIB interscholastic athletics.
I don't think we had any changes to this. I think we just wanted the school committee to review it, just to make sure it was...
Yep.
What was happening.
Yeah, I noticed that we had any edits when we reviewed last. Okay. JKA corporal punishments.
Again, this was just minor edits to be compliant with the law.
And for anybody watching, it is not allowed.
Right.
It's pretty much what it says. JP student solicitations.
Again, I think this was just, just to make sure this mirrors what is actually done.
Yep. Okay. And JQ, student fees?
Same thing, just to make sure this is, this mirrors what is done.
Okay. All right. Okay, then. So with that, I'll take the two that have noted edits first. So would somebody like, like to make a motion to approve policies JGH and JGH-R with noted edits?
So move, DeLuca.
Can I get a second?
Second, Wiseman.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Okay. And then, next up is, let's see, approval of policies. Can I get a motion to approve policies JRA-R?
Oh, that's supposed to delete.
I'm sorry. So, yes, to approve for dele, yes, can I...
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Approve, can I get a motion to delete JRA-R and move this to the deleted policies section of the meeting?
So move, DeLuca.
Okay. Roll call votes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Okay. And then, can I get a motion to approve policies JJA, JGG, JJIB, JKA, JP, and JQ?
So move. Okay, go ahead.
So move, Loomis.
Can I get a second?
DeLuca, second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Okay. All right. Great. So...
And then, I'm sorry, could you mind if I just say one thing?
No, go ahead, of course.
So with the Js, we're, we're almost done. There's a couple we'll, we'll review at our next subcommittee meeting. The concussion policy, we need to wait till either Colleen or when Mary is back, because they redid it, and so we just need them to go over it. And then we have a group that went to legal, so we're just waiting to hear back on that.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much to our policy subcommittee, including, including Director Perez for all of your work and collaboration on this, helping us move forward. I know this is like pushing a boulder uphill, and you're all doing a great job, so thank you for that. Excuse me. Okay. Next up on the agenda, we have public comments. We do have some members of the public present, so if anybody would like to make a comment, like to make a comment, you will be, you're welcome to do so now. Comments are limited to, to three minutes in total, and I, we need you to state your name and address before leaving your comments. Would anybody, does anybody here have anything today? No public comments today? Okay. All right. Great. All right. So then, next up, I'm making a motion to go into executive session to return to open session for the purposes of pursuant to MGL Chapter 38, subsection 21a2, to conduct strategy session with preparation for collective bargaining with Eastern Educators Association, Unit A, Unit B, paraprofessional in agreements, and pursuant to MGL Chapter 38, subsection 21a1, to discuss complaints against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual, and a revision to the MOA for OAH block. And in my opinion, having these discussions in open session would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the school committee. Can I get a second?
DeLuca, second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Okay. All right, great. So we will adjourn to executive session. Okay, all right, great, so we will adjourn to executive session.
Next up on the agenda is a vote to approve the memorandum of agreement for the Oliver Ames H block. So any questions, comments before we take a motion on that? Would somebody like to make a move to approve the updated memorandum of agreement?
A move to approve?
A move to approve the updated M O A for O A's H block. So moved?
Was. Second Wiseman.
Roll call vote?
To Luke, yes.
Wiseman.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Okay. Next up, scheduled payments since the school committee last met, the warrants 051 S, 050 S, and 055 S have all been completed. So those are all four routine operating expenses. Next up, we have meeting minutes. First, we have regular meeting minutes from February 27th and March 13th, 2025. Did committee members have any questions, comments, or edits about either one of those sets of minutes?
No, I did not.
Okay. All right, great. Okay, so then I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February 27th and for March 13th, 2025. Can somebody second?
DeLuca, second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes, sorry.
Okay. All right. And then the school committee workshop from February 27th, 2025, I believe that was the student advisory committee? Yes, okay, yep. Any questions, comments, or edits on those? Hearing none. I'll make a motion then to approve the workshop meeting minutes from February 27th, 2025. Can I get a second?
Loomis, second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman abstained and I wasn't there.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Okay. And then next up, executive session from May 13th, 2025. Before we move to either accept and release or accept and not release Before we, before we move to either accept and release or accept and not release at this time, does anybody have any concerns that they would like to hold over for review in a future executive session?
No.
So none from... Jackie, Lauren, you're okay? All right, so with this, I'll make a motion to approve the executive session minutes but not release for March 13th, 2025.
Wiseman, second.
Thank you. Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Okay, great. Next up, superintendent notes. Dr. Cabral?
No, thank you.
Okay. Assistant superintendent notes. The only thing I have to share is notification that M C A S begins next week with R O. starting. So wishing all of our students at Richardson Homestead wonderful luck in, not luck, but excel, continue to excel with your M C A S. Great. School committee notes. Want to start with Nancy?
Sure, real quick. Lauren, Jen, and I got to attend the eighth grade assembly yesterday for the civics classes. They had some great questions for both Mrs. Fulgenetti on select board and Connor Reed, the town administrator. It was, it was very good. The kids were great and the most popular question was, when's Taco Bell coming? They applauded. So that was exciting.
The whole room erupted. It was, it was hilarious.
And also, we all attended the part of the M A J E. At Norwood High School last Saturday. And Oliver Ames, the, the Division One group that played later in the afternoon, will be going to the Hatch Shell, I believe, on May 3rd.
Yep.
And the other group got a...
Silver.
Silver medal.
Yep.
They're wonderful. And, and again, I think that's it for me. Okay.
All right, great. Jackie, anything?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, Lauren, anything?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay. I have, the only thing I have was that EMS had their night of the arts last week. I was unfortunately unable to attend, but I did see some, some pictures of it. And as always, it looked like a really great night with all kinds of creativity and talent on display. So well done EMS arts programs for having a successful night of the arts. With that, let's see, our next meeting is next Thursday. This will be our annual school budget hearing. And we will be holding that in the auditorium at O A. at 6:00 P. M. And with that, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Wiseman, so move.
Okay, second, DeLuca.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Loomis, yes.